All right, the time is 6:00 PM. I'll call to order the March 11th meeting of the Huxley City Council. Roll call, please.
Roberts?
Here.
Etcher?
Here.
Rigler?
Here.
Mulder?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Thank you very much. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll give you a motion.
Motion by Mulder. Second by Etcher. Any discussion? All those in favor, please respond with an "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now is the time in the meeting for public comment. Is there anybody from the public wishing to address council at this time? Seeing no one rise, we will move on. Item four this evening is a public hearing. I need a, let's see, the time is 6:02. I will open the public hearing on the urban renewal tax increment revenue bonds. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this agenda item this evening? Dave, you want to give an overview?
As you recall, at your meeting two weeks ago, we'd set this hearing up. This project is looking to fund the new public works facility. We thought we were going to have two public hearings, but we missed one of the deadlines. One was a four and one was a 10 day, so we have to reset the public hearing for our next meeting for the GO portion and hopefully we'll get the GO bonds over the, over the tax increment finance revenue bonds. They cost a little bit more and there's a little more cost to them, but we want to be prepared for whichever route makes the most sense for the city to go. So that's why you got your hearing this evening and Chip is here to answer any questions you may have. I think Chip did a pretty good job talking about the two different issues at our last meeting, but he is present tonight if you have any additional questions.
Good. Last chance, anybody from the public wishing to speak during the public hearing this evening? Seeing no one rise, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll offer a motion.
Motion by Mr. Rigler, second by Mr. Mulder. You want a voice vote or a roll call on this? Okay. All those in favor, please respond with an "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Up next, I need a motion to approve Resolution 25017, taking action for the issuance of an urban renewal tax increments revenue bond.
I'll give you a motion.
Motion by Mr. Murphy. Second, second by Mr. Rigler. Any questions or discussion? Is there any additional direction you needed at all from us, Chip?
The, what the action does simply is just allows the city to proceed with financing at a future date. And then you'll have the same proposed action for your March 25th meeting on the general obligation financing. Again, just gives you the authority to proceed at a future date. So that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Etcher?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
All right, need a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Mulder.
Give you a second.
Second by Ms. Roberts. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rigler?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Etcher?
Okay, moving along. Item 6A this evening is Resolution Number 25020, setting the date for a public hearing and additional action on a proposal to enter into a GO urban renewal loan agreement and to borrow money thereunder. Need a motion on Resolution 25020.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Etcher. Second, second by Mr. Rigler.
Chip?
So this simply sets the public hearing date for the general obligation financing for the public works building for March 25th and sets the city up to receive bids in the mid-summertime period. And soon the city is going to go forward with the financing after you receive a bid. So happy to answer any questions simply with that.
Any further questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mulder?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Okay, moving along. Resolution 25021, accepting the final plat, platted easements and performance bond for Westview Heights Plat 4. Any motion?
I'll give you a motion.
Motion by Mr. Mulder.
Second.
Second by Mr. Etcher. Any, Dave, you want to give?
Yep, I would just note before this evening, we've got the, the resolution to prove the final plat for Westview Heights Plat 4. Aaron has looked at all of the different opinions and consents and easements. Forrest has reviewed his piece. The only thing that hadn't been completed as of this time, which we have the performance bond for is some additional concrete work, which is for the trail and some of the pad ramps out there that will be constructed this spring. Forrest did look at the work that was needed to be done, looked at the bond and signed off on that as well. So we should be in pretty good shape. And what you're doing this evening is you are approving the final plat. Some point later this year, you will accept all of the public improvements at a later date.
Thank you for that clarification. Any further questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Yes.
Roberts, yes. Etcher?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving along, Ordinance 540, which is amending the Huxley Code Regarding Parking Regulations. Need a motion on this? Motion by Mr. Mulder.
Second.
Second by Ms. Roberts. This is our third and final reading of this. Any discussion on it? Roll call, please.
Roberts?
Yes.
Etcher?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Moving along, Ordinance 541, it's amending the Huxley Code Regarding No Parking Zones. Again, this is also our third reading. Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Mulder.
Second.
Second by Ms. Roberts. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Etcher?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Mulder? Murphy?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Moving along, any departments that wish to make any comments this evening? Looks like Travis might be getting up there.
There we go. All right, just a question. You requested last meeting to get you something. Doing research, the only one that I could come up with that's relatively comparative is Polk City. I sent that out to you, 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 and you. I didn't hear anything back. So there was no other? I just wondered if we're, what additionally want. I've, I've tried.
So there was no other communities in Iowa that?
That do fire and EMS the way we do it?
Just, do we have any other communities our size that have an ambulance service?
Yes, but they, they're not owned by the fire department. Most of them are owned by, like an EMS, which is separate than fire.
Okay.
So that's, this, this was the most comparative one I could find.
Okay.
Size wise.
And I got that and it was great. Thank you.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there were any questions on it. Cause I didn't hear anything back, so. Okay. All right. And then also maybe sometime in the near future, if we could be on the work session to talk about things like a new truck that's going to be coming up. New fire station is going to be coming up, things like that. And then possibly, yeah, just something that, you know, for the future. So. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Travis.
Forrest, anything this evening? Okay, Aaron? Thank you. Barb?
The new microphones have been ordered and we will be ordering the council chairs the end of this week. So hopefully everything will be up and running by the 25th.
Murphy?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Mulder?
No, thanks.
Rigler?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, bring up to council or maybe follow up on the Herons reached out to me. They live down the street, but they asked just as a follow-up to if there were historical records on, you know, how the drive came in on the south end and north end respectively. I actually thought he said he'd be in attendance, so maybe a conflict came up, but I don't know what the next actions are. Just wanted to, to bring it up as far as if there were additional records that were requested.
Corey, I spoke with Todd after that meeting and I know that Dixon was, was gone for a while. He's, he's down south. And I did ask Todd to have Dixon get ahold of me when he got back to see if Dixon had any records that Todd wasn't aware of that I could get ahold of. So I have not heard from him, but I will reach back out again and see if he's back yet.
I know that you reached out also asking for follow-up. Seemed like it just, we had a discussion and just left an hanging in the air of what's going on, so. It might be good to follow up with him and just yeah, once we have the
I guess, once we have those records from Dixon. I mean, maybe that'll provide the clarity he's looking for as well, or at least allow us to make a fully informed decision, but there was, well, I don't see Jeff here today, but he mentioned that he thought he remembered something and that predates me enough that I couldn't make a good decision without it. So that's all I have.
No, I don't have anything.
Nope, thank you.
Okay, that concludes our regular business for this evening. We do have a work session scheduled for tonight with two items on it. Item A is a presentation and discussion regarding the Huxley Heights Concept Plan.
I'll start with that, Mayor. In your packet, we provided you with a revised concept plan for Huxley Heights, which is a 47 acre parcel. This is at the corner of 560th and First Street. This concept was revised coming out of Planning and Zoning work session that D.R. Horton, their reps and their engineers had with planning and zoning. In your package, you also see the original two concepts. And I think one of the big concerns dealt with the number of drives on the original two concepts that were going to come and kind, that would be coming off of an arterial street. I did provide you the code section that talks about trying to minimize that. If you can't get them all, you try to minimize. You had that turned really well a minute ago. There we go. So, and then we provided them at that meeting and in your package, you've got stuff from the old comp plan showing how 560th and, and First Street were thought of maybe coming into play back in the day. There was also a plan that we shared with the folks at D.R. Horton, showing a, a roundabout at that intersection. With us this evening, we have Anna with D.R. Horton and Brandon was unable to make it, but we have remind me, Keith with Stubbs Engineering. So I'll kind of turn it over to Anna. She can kind of talk about what they're looking to do and try to answer, they'll try to answer any questions you folks may have this evening, what their hope is to try to get things addressed on the concepts with P&amp;Z and council and then come back at a future date with a full plat for this.
Point of clarification, this plat that we're looking at here, was that in our packet?
Yeah.
Okay. Is this the one that says Concept 2?
Nope, should have a revised. Should be a revised one first. There's the revised, you've got the revised and then you've got Concept 1 and 2.
Okay.
So I include it all.
Oh, that's fine. Just trying to get revised.
I have the same kind of question. So we're looking, so revised is where we landed? That's what we're going to talk about tonight? That's the one, or is it?
I, I think revised is what Anna is here to speak about tonight because what they tried to do from concepts, they presented Concept 1 and 2 both to P&amp;Z. And out of that discussion, which was a fairly lengthy discussion that evening, and you've got the minutes from the P&amp;Z's comments from that. Anna had the folks at Stubbs go back and try to address a lot of those concerns that they heard from the planning and zoning members, as well as looking at stuff from the comp plan and that's, she's back tonight with a revised plan to talk to you folks about, kind of jumping that next step.
I have some print offs too for you all. So what this is, is a few pictures of a community that would be very close to what we will be doing here in Huxley. There's an area here. Kind of like what numerous sites look like. There's a picture of a monument that we put in all of our communities. We drive to put a monument in every community because then what that requires is that there's an HOA to maintain it. So then the HOA is able to collect dues. So then we have somebody who's enforcing covenants when it comes to, you know, fence approvals, shed approvals, et cetera. There's also a picture of what we do in every community. We always set up a model. We have a model that we consider a sales center. So we turn the garage into an office where we have a sales rep Monday through Friday, nine to five, and then, I'm sorry, Monday through Saturday, nine to five. Sorry. Sorry, I'm short too. No, sorry, we have a model, a sales rep and a model from Monday through Saturday, nine to five, and then Sunday. I think it's 12 till 6. So we have somebody on site all the time to be able to show people houses as well as answer homeowners' questions because everybody usually always has questions about new construction. And then you'll see, I put in a copy of a ranch plan that we would like to do here. And what that shows is four different elevations on the front page as well as our two-story plan that we plan to put here. Just to kind of talk about, you know, what D.R. Horton does that kind of, I wouldn't say per se separates, separates us from everybody, but it's just what we drive and how we do our process. We have, we'll go into a community, we'll have two or three plans that we do. Each one of those plans is going to have an A, B, C, D rendering with an elevation 1, 2, 3, 4. So then that gives us the ability to be able to put two Hamiltons next to each other, but two completely different front elevations. So it doesn't look like the cookie cutter, every single home is going to be the same. Also, one of our biggest things is driving affordability. With doing a market analysis on Huxley, that's when we decided, you know, hey, this would be a great area for us to try to come into. Just because it looks like a lot of the growth that is happening here right now is a lot more custom homes and $400,000 plus. Whereas we're going to drive to be like 300 to maybe 400, but probably not even get up to that amount. Yeah. So in regard to our concept, we had the meeting with P&amp;Z. Like David shared, it was pretty lengthy. A lot of things came up. But we were able, in my opinion, to, one, I think the layout is a lot better with all the lots. But to address one of the biggest concerns, which was having a house off of an arterial street. So with shifting everything, we've now been able to get it to only have six houses that will come off of the arterial street. Plan for those houses also are to put the larger lots in those six areas to have the ability to do a third car garage. So that's going to give the driveway, you know, a little bit more of a turnaround to, and then as well as parking, so people aren't having to park right out front on the arterial street. We did not show parkland because again, we're working with 47 acres and we're trying to drive for affordability. So we're open to looking at, you know, the credit or to accommodate the part, the need for parkland. The developer to the west, he has a lot more land to work with than what we do. So we're just hoping that that, you know, will kind of weaken suffice and drive that. Again, we're also showing Oak Boulevard. We did not show 560th like we showed on a previous concept because what that did was drive more homes to go off of the arterial street. As well as showing the roundabout because it sounded like everybody in the P&amp;Z was really leaning towards having the roundabout there versus coming in through 560th and Oak Street. We think that with this concept, you know, we're accommodating all the requests as well as kind of trying to drive costs down. Cause to me affordability, we got to have costs down. I will say, you know, an arterial street is a little bit more expensive, but I think the biggest cost is going to be the roundabout. So that's where we're trying to get the density to be able to spread infrastructure costs as well as meet all the P&amp;Z comments.
Following up on one of your comments there regarding the six lots that front the arterial on, on Oak there. You mentioned you're proposing some larger width lots there that could accommodate a third stall garage, which of course is necessary because there almost certainly won't be parking allowed on Oak.
Right.
Would you be amenable to making that a condition of the plat approval that those six slots will have a third car?
We definitely can do that.
I think that would be, seem appropriate.
Yeah. Yep, yep. I agree.
Other developers in the past, we had talked about 560th Street being paved. We're there also. And that's we talked about that. See that in so it, it's been discussed when we approach that staff. Including the curb and gutter on the west side. We just, we didn't pay that in that detail. Yeah, and there's no 560th in the south. We miss opportunities probably just
Well, that would be kind of in line with what was done with Don Van Howling's Blue Sky. You've got, you know, you've got, you've got the curb and gutter on the east side. Or I guess it'd be the west side of his, east side of 560th, just down the road. So.
Exactly. So we want would, would these land side and lot sizes and their frontage and everything fit with what we're looking for in code? And I don't know.
I think they're looking to do a PUD and there's talk of, they've got some 50 and 60 foot lots, which can be allowed under PND and that's part of that density and making this cost effective. So, and planning and zoning, I don't recall really had any real heartburn over that. They seemed to be able to live with that. So. Especially since it was going to be a PUD.
On that On that P U D aspect or the smaller lots, are they going to be the back lots that are backing up to other development? The concern is, is so you have transition, so you don't have a fifty foot lot going into an eighty foot lot.
Well, kind of our goal when we're designing is we like to keep the fifty foot lots on a frontage of a development, so I would assume that they're probably going to be closer to east first street is where the fifty foot's, and then we fade into our larger lots, that's usually how we do it. Um, one, it is better for sales, doing it like that, um, as well as we have the detention area and you're going to have greenery up on the north half, so that's where we're going to drive to have the larger lots in the back and then um, smaller lots when you come into the development.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, but is there a bike trail or part of the, the trail plan through there?
We, we did share as well that the, uh, we shared the master trail plan that has the bike trail coming along, I believe it's the north side of the development and down five sixty.
The north side of the.
Wasn't the north side, Forrest? I don't know if that was in the packet.
It was quite, it, it kind of went back and forth in the meeting, everybody had a little bit different of an understanding where it was. Um, but I think it was the north to bring it down five sixtieth to attach to your guys' other.
I can go grab the trail plan real quick, I think I brought that into P and C, I couldn't remember if we showed it on.
The, I don't know, north side or south side of, uh, Oak Boulevard, but along Oak Boulevard to five sixty, then south on five sixty. Okay, along Oak Boulevard, okay. Yeah, might affect some of those lot sizes, especially on those ones that will have frontage to the arterial film over. Right, but if it's on the south side.
On the south side, yeah.
So it might be a reason to shift it to the south side of this, it might change the, um, those slots on the south side, whether they're as appealing with that, but yeah. I don't know some people like that.
I was going to say, I think a lot of people, it, when it comes to trails, usually it's, a lot of people really like those lots, um, because they can walk them, ride them.
That's the, the one question I would have, uh, and maybe this is more at the plat level when we get to approval of that is uh, last meeting, we had the discussion about the sub base under roads for any new development, that's still hanging out there, and I know that's going to increase the cost per lot, so that would be, I guess, something I'd like to know what our answer is going to be going into this.
That was one of the things that I think we talked about briefly, um, like with Don Van Howling, we asked for sub base to be underneath all of his streets and that was, I believe, where the city, uh, did a TIF rebate agreement to cover the cost for the sub base that were, put under those roads out in, uh, Blue Sky Estates.
Sure, we agreed that's the way it's going to be for forever, right?
Right, yeah. Yeah, I, I think we just talked that that is an option that we have as, as we transition and we, you know, we've done that, that's something that we could look at to do to kind of ease into this, is to assist with that cost on a few of these early ones to. I, I would say that I've been kind of opposed since I've been on to the tiffing of the residential, but if, if we are going to require the sub base, um, I'm probably going to change my view on that. Yes, yes.
Right.
No, I think that's great, I'm glad you brought that up. No, I'm just glad you brought that up now, so we don't get down, down the road and then it's a surprise.
Um, with this, uh, assuming you purchased this parcel, is there an outlot south of uh, east first street as well that comes with this?
Not that we're purchasing now.
Okay.
We are, we're just purchasing everything north of.
See within that, perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Is that a done deal yet or you're saying?
No, so we are actually in contract with the seller until we get preliminary plat approval and then that's when we would be purchasing the land. Um, we kind of like to run things like that just in case, because you never know, especially with this being such a small piece.
I know, we're probably not going to, we're crazy. Now, if we just teach people how to drive, it'd be acceptable.
Um, yeah, I think that was, I mean, also something that we also spoke about in the P and Z meeting was to see like how the city felt about cost share with the roundabout, just due to costs and then the paving of five hundred and sixtieth, but I think we just addressed the paving. Um, but I'm assuming that's something that we can talk further in the process, but just to see how you guys felt about that. All right. All right, thank you. No.
All right, the other, uh, work session item this evening is discussion regarding shift differential, chief, you going to start this one? Thanks, sir.
Okay, um, what we have going on in the police department is basically called shift differential, where it's a bit of a reward for working second, third shift or off hours, it does not include weekends. For patrol, it does not include sergeants and it does not include me. Um, this was put into play with, uh, previous, uh, city administrator, previous chief. Since then, uh, current well, city clerk and deputy city clerk have found it to be quite a headache, I have a bit of a headache with it too, but I think mine is probably the least of the headaches, so if theirs is more, I, I sympathize with them. So it was brought up one day, just kind of talking, you know, what if we got rid of shift differential, figure out how much we're paying for shift differential, let's use an easy number, let's say it's a thousand dollars, we could divide that up per hour amongst the four officers that are eligible for it, and then just get rid of it, it's done, we don't have to have this headache anymore. Um, Barb crunched the numbers for me, appreciate that, I don't remember exactly, I think it was like thirty nine where we landed, something like that.
It got, based on what we paid in calendar year twenty four, it would come out to thirty seven cents additional per hour for the four officers.
Right, so that's essentially it, um. I did talk to my officers about it, it's, it'd be advantage to the school resource officer, obviously, because he works the good hours, however, I found that most of the time the officer that wants to work the overnight shift does it because it's better on family. Um, the shift differential that gets, uh, rewarded a little bit less is for second shift, which is bad for families, you know this Rory. Um, so the, I guess, reward rather than monetarily, when you get seniority is you generally want to be the overnighter and that's, uh, kind of the reason why I came to this, like, let's just get rid of it. Um, it'll be a better deal for me, less headache for me, the officers are going to accept it and it'll be easily better for Suzette and Barb, um, I just wanted to have the council entertain that, I think we have to have some sort of a action on that before we can just willy nilly do it, so. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that's essentially it, um, and Barb can jump into.
And everybody, all the officers are on board with this, chief?
Uh, they don't love it or hate it, they're just, they, they know it's coming, um, like I said, my third shift officer, he's the most senior one I have, and he wants third shift because it just works out better for family, it's not because of the money. Um, they work part time, they kind of figured out how much it would be, you know, per year, he says, yeah, it's like a couple extra shifts that say is one of his part time gigs, so he's already crunched the numbers and doesn't seem too darn concerned about it, so.
I just don't want to do something that rocks the boat and chases everybody off.
Sure, yeah, um. Yeah, I don't foresee that this would be the, the straw that breaks camel's back and, you know, and, uh, like I said, what, what kind of eases this one or puts a little bit of a Band-Aid on it would be the guy that's making, uh, I believe it's sixty five cent shift differential will actually get thirty seven on his base, so it's not quite such a dramatic or drastic, uh, cut, you could say. Um, obviously, the school resource lot guy loves it, he just got himself a thirty seven cent rate. However, he's not always going to be my school resource officer, so it's kind of a, I don't know, it's, uh, it's accepted, not loved or hated, just accepted, no.
So, I'm a little confused, why is the school resource officer getting a?
Uh, he, he doesn't, but he's one of the regular officers, so he's eligible for the, for the, uh, raise, I guess you could say, I want to keep them all even.
And does he not work some of those other shifts during the three months that he's working for us and not?
He does.
Just working for the school resource officer, that he would have qualified for.
Right, now, um, in the summertime, my night officer, my overnight officer is senior to him and can bounce him off of days, but he has chosen not to do that, he, he likes his nights, so, you know, there you go. So, yep. All right, thanks, guys, if you don't have any other questions, I'll get out.
Oh, any opposition to bringing this forward as a agenda item?
I, I guess I'm interested in, of where I've worked in the past, where we have worked on working nights and daytime, so you always got shift differential, is this, I mean, you're, you're proposing eliminating that and just evening that across everyone.
Right.
Smoothed out a payroll, had they exploded that.
We've had a couple recently that were a little bit uh, confusing. Um, I could put it that way, yeah.
So ours were a, uh, set amount per year. Say eight hundred dollars for shift one, which was from eleven PM to seven AM. Six hundred and fifty dollars per year for three to eleven shift. Day shift did not get any shift differential, uh, and then our special operations unit had a, like a five hundred dollar, so it was a specific number, Barb. And then that was, that was divided within, uh, two thousand.
Right, right, I looked at the number of hours we paid out for second shift and third shift. And we paid, um, an additional, I'm sorry, but did I say third, or?
There it goes. There's a shift.
Yeah, ours is.
Yes, yes, it's an hourly, hourly, yeah.
So that's what I'm saying is, you might want to get ahold of. I, you can do it whatever you guys want to do, whatever's going to make you guys happy, but that's the way ours was, it was a specific amount and then you divided that by the pay.
Right, so, um, the, the difference between us will be, uh, you know, Ames, obviously you can have, you can pretty much count on what your schedule is going to be and that you're going to work overnight shift or whatever you want to call it, whereas here I have one guy working two second shifts and he'll also have to work in the same pay period, the overnight shift, so he has two different shift differentials that he has to deal with, which is also confusing. Um, so to, to set an amount like five hundred or eight hundred, we wouldn't be able to just do that, we just too small to do it.
Sounds like you guys got it figured out.
Well, the, the real issue came when we had a couple of hours or a couple of officers that worked overtime and because they get, get shift differential, we have to figure that into their pay and calculate an average, so we know what that overtime rate is and it took a couple of days.
Whether it's shift one, two, or three, and we paid that rate.
Yeah.
Or every number of hours they worked on that rate, but I like simple.
Yeah, and part of, part of working here for our police department is you're expected to work every single hour of everything, you know, holiday, everything, it's all on the table for you, so that's kind of where we why we can't do that, it'd be nice to blanket it, that'd be so nice, but we can't, so that's why we haven't landed where we did and it's, it got confusing real quick. And, um, yeah, the, a couple of weeks ago, that was when it really came to a head, um.
Yeah, thanks, chief, all right, thanks, staff, if you could bring this back as an agenda item, um, in the future, that would be great. That concludes our work session for this evening, any motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Etcher?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rigler, all those in favor, please shine a high.
Alright.
All those fellows, same sign, motion carries, thank you very much, next meeting is March twenty fifth at six PM, thank you very much.